Linda, could you give the invocation, please?
Father, thank you for the privilege of praying with the members of the Freeport City Council, and those that who have come tonight, and I love that we can place prayer in high value and the importance of it. In First James 5:16, "The effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man availeth much." Thank you, Father, for Scripture that teaches us how to pray. We pray wholeheartedly with a desire to produce the best outcome, and we realize that we must first carefully and intentionally ask for forgiveness of the sins in our hearts and in our thoughts, for how else can we be righteous and how else can we avail much? Please give us passion to pray and strength and courage and patience to keep praying till we see the best outcome. Lord, I ask that each one here be bolstered up and encouraged in their private moments of prayer. Father, we are also mindful of this season of Christmas. I pray for peace and goodwill over the community of Freeport. I pray that you soften our hearts to the needs of others and help us to respond with compassion and joy. I pray for peace that starts in our hearts, for us to be calm in the midst of stress and complications, and for us to be quiet in the loud noisiness of life. Lord, give us opportunities to see deeply into the lives of those around us and not just skim over them. Help us to smile, not frown. Help us to stretch out our hands to shake or hug with sincerity. I humbly pray that the true meaning of Christmas be released into the hearts of this community for some who have forgotten that the gift of Christmas is Jesus, the Son of God, and the one who brings peace and reconciliation in our hearts towards Him. Amen.
Amen. In the absences, Mayor Miller, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Council members, if you would respond here, please. Brashaw?
Aye.
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Here.
McLanathan?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
And Busker?
Here.
Could I please have a motion to appoint a mayor pro tem for this meeting, please?
Madam Clerk, I would move to appoint Alderman Brashaw being the senior alderperson to be mayor pro tem for purposes of this meeting.
Second.
All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening.
Evening.
Counsel, before you is tonight's agenda with an amendment to remove the third part of executive session regarding litigation. Do we have any discussion on this amendment?
Madam Chair. Oh, on the amendment.
Alderman Busker.
I just wanted to point out a scribbler's error on action number 16, be with the local 441, not 41.
Duly noted, scribbler's error, 441 instead of 41.
Thank you.
Do we have any other changes, counsel? If not, is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman McLanathan. All those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The others have it. Item number two is the approval of minutes from the public hearing for appropriations ordinance and the council meeting on December 2nd, 2019. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Meisig and a second by Alderman Ross. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Next, we have public comments. I see we have signed up Captain Jim Brixton from the Salvation Army. This is on a non-agenda item. Counsel, what is your pleasure on this?
Could we move to suspend the appropriate rules that will allow the captain to speak now as opposed to waiting to the end of the meeting? Can we make that motion?
Counsel, is that the general consensus?
Yeah. Okay. That's fine.
Ms. Sosnowski, do we need a voice vote on that?
No, you do not.
Okay, thank you. And there we have Captain Jim Brixton from the Salvation Army is here with one of his merry elves, and I also see Cal West got his other merry elf.
Thank you, council members. Oh, you shouldn't given him to him yet. Don't open him. Don't open him. This year, we'd just like to announce the Battle of the Badges, the win, the winners. There's no winners or losers, but we are, the Salvation Army has been blessed by the departments that have, in good fun, been palling around for a few days. I think maybe we should have had the other chiefs come and try to, you guys could teach them how to do it, because this year they raised $720.34 over last year, which is an all-time high, so we're very grateful for that. It'll help, will help with our bottom line. The things that we have going on right now, though, if we can put a last-minute plea out, we have about 250 hours of bell ringing between now and Christmas, and we've only met 30% of our goal. So if you have two hours, if anybody has two hours, if you have time, we could use bell ringers. This year, we have our ongoing trophy, so this is the fourth year. This, this trophy will have special meaning to city manager Alolo Crowe. His son broke this bell. He beat it so hard it broke. So this will be forever, and I thought it was going to get caught in evidence today. But anyhow, the bad elf, why don't you guys stand up? Come on over here. The bad elf made up certificates for the fire department and police department. Before you open it, there is a difference of $423.30. So if one of you would like to draw a check for $423.31 to ensure, don't open it yet, don't open it, you might want to talk to some of your friends out here. Don't be, I'm serious, chief. Okay, go ahead and open it. And then you can tell how much he raised.
And if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium to read those amounts out, I'd appreciate it.
The fire department, oh, this is the police department.
Did you mix that up? There you go. I'll trade you. Definitely. Freeport, for the Freeport Salvation Army, $1,431.42. Battle of the Badges, 2019.
This one says 1,500.
Oh.
Nope, sorry. $1,008.12.
You know, it's an honor to participate in this competition, and I have to give kudos to all the folks that came out and rang. You know, we're pretty lucky. I had three to seven bell ringers through the whole day, kept things going, and of course, I pulled out a few strings and got some hot cocoa and chocolate, coffee for folks that came by, the fire department side of things. So it was a great competition, and I know Chief Summers is going to turn the heat up on me next year, so.
But you just want to have the good door.
So it's, a great competition goes to a great cause, and just like Captain Brixton said, we really could use the help ringing. We're going to be working on a ringing for 24 hours from the evening of the 20th through the evening of the 21st at the Walmart store and at Cubs, ringing for 24 hours straight, so trying to raise awareness and then get people to volunteer to ring. 20% a goal, that's a long ways to go, or 30% a goal, we have a long ways to go, so every bit of help we can provide the Salvation Army translates into better quality of life for our citizens here in Freeport, so thank you very much for your support.
You must have booked that speech. Did you know? Huh? Did you know? What? Booked that speech or something?
No.
No, okay. Don't run for public office.
Thank you, Captain Brixton. Thank you, chiefs, and thank you to your entire departments for putting forth the effort to ring the bell for Salvation Army to raise these funds over $2,442, I think I came up with, you raised between your two groups of employees, so thank you very much. Next, we are going to move on to the consent agenda, which is item number four. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as the first item after approval of the consent agenda. This consent agenda consists of approving and placing on file the board and fire and police commissioners' minutes from October 22nd, 2019, 2020 calendar of regular meetings for boards and commissions, the fire department report from October of 2019, building permit report from November of 2019, the liquor commission semi-annual report to city manager July to December 2019, the financial reports, general fund, library fund, water fund, sanitary sewer fund, storm sewer fund, November 30th of 2019, cash and investments report November 30th of 2019, approval of finance bills payable in the amount of $1,603,253.66, and finally, the approval of payroll for pay period ending December 7th, 2019, including fringe benefit payments for a total of $561,095.16. Does a member of council have any items to remove from the consent agenda for discussion purposes prior to a motion to approve? I see no request, so do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Busker and a second by Alderman Parker. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Attorney Sosnowski, does the chair vote in this case?
She does, yes.
Okay. And Alderman Brashaw?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, was there a question?
The finance approval sheet that needs signing, do we know where that's at?
The consent agenda? It's coming. Next item is item number five, the second reading of ordinance 2019-76. Madam Clerk, could you please read?
Water pollution control loan program, ordinance authorizing loan agreement, home rule entity for the city of Freeport.
Thank you. This is presented by Manager Crow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, so this is the loan program to, for the first phase of the wastewater treatment facility as well as Adam Street. This, while, we will only need about 13 and a half million dollars, we have set this ordinance up for a little over 17 million, just to give us some additional room if they come back to us and say that we need the additional room for the wastewater treatment. So we recommend going forward and approving this ordinance so we can start the loan process.
Counsel, discussion?
Chair.
Yes, Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you, and just to reiterate, this is not the final document in regards to, this just gets the process started, and then when we have the more updated figures further down the road on the program, we'll get the additional approval documents.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or further discussion?
Chair.
Yes, Alderman Borneman.
So it's, we're asking for more than the 14.7 million. If everything comes back and we only need 14.7 million, what do we do with the excess that we would receive?
It just gives us excess room in case the, because we're, the engineering documents are not yet done, so that they gave us the, the extra room is there to cover if, for some reason, the engineering estimates come back higher than what we anticipate. So we, if we had, did not have that extra room, we would have to come back and reauthorize an additional ordinance.
And just to follow up?
Yes.
We're only taking out what is needed. This just allows us to take out more than?
Correct. That's correct.
Manager Crow, usual practices to, to add a little bit of cushion there anyhow for cost overrun, is that correct?
That's correct. Until we get the actual engineering estimates going, the actual engineering costs, these are based upon estimates, we always, there's always that additional growth in it, so in case the engineering costs are higher than what the estimates are, it gives us additional room to ask for additional money.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage of ordinance 2019-76?
Brashaw?
Aye.
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item number six, the second reading of ordinance 2019-77. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance declaring public works and library equipment in surplus.
Thank you. This should be presented by Director Carr and Director Huffines. Ashley Huffines, please. Thank you.
This is the same list there have not been, as far as I'm aware, any edits to the list is, it's the same as what was presented at the last council meeting.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Ms. Huffines or Director Carr? I have one question. For the listening audience, could you just give us some examples of what is, that is open for sale or open for bid?
Well, we have hundreds of library shelving units that were either not used from when the building was built, or things that have been taken down for renovations, and one of those included is the youth services area. And then we also have just some miscellaneous items that are not getting used anymore, so different types of display units, we have chairs and tables, some cubicle-style desks, and kids, some kids furniture-style items.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
End of list. Any other questions? If not, Madam Clerk, could you take the roll call on passage of ordinance number 2019-77?
Brashaw?
Aye.
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
This ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item number seven, second reading of ordinance 2019-78. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
A supplemental appropriation ordinance of the city of Freeport for fiscal year 2019B beginning May 1 and ending December 31, 2019.
Thank you. This should be presented by Manager Crow and Director Bukas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn this over to Director Bukas. We do have an amendment that we'll have to approve, that he's going to run through and summarize prior to the actual approval. We did some modifications prior, after the first reading, so I'll turn this over to Director Bukas to run those through.
As the city manager Crow stated, having a lot of time between the last reading that we had and to the end of the year, we had some additional bills and some additional revenues come in, so we're trying to get as close as we can to where we think we're going to end the year. In the general fund, we increased the, and we're talking about Exhibit A, in the general fund, we increased the property tax revenues that we were taking in slightly, also the reimbursement for fire overtime and construction and zoning permits were kind of up there as well. On the expenditure side, the general building and repair line items was increased, expenses were increased there, but our airport engineering fees, our expenses actually were less, or anticipated being less than we originally had anticipated. Our diesel fuel is going to be up about $11,000 more than we anticipated ending the year. Tree assistance was up about $5,000 due to another claim we had. Police, police salaries for non-bargaining and ask me, were actually down. We decreased those a little bit, but for the actual patrolmen, they went, the salaries went up. Fire salaries were also up more than what we anticipated. Library, their property tax for FICA and IMRF was up a little bit more than we anticipated, as well as their interest. Street improvements, we actually decreased that by $607,000 because we had put into debt service proceeds which we did not, did not use or did not account for. They came in prior to the beginning of this fiscal year. The fire improvement fund, our accident fees actually came in higher than we anticipated by about $7,500. Landfill fees, we didn't budget for the solar lease, so that brought in additional $4,400 there. And then on the, on the waste side, on the refuse side of the ledger, we also saw fees increased by $5,000, but we also saw expenditures decreased by $5,000. In the water fund, the general salaries were up by about $20,000. Customer service salaries were down by about $28,000 than we anticipated. FICA was up slightly. Consulting fees were down by almost $32,000, and interest was up a little bit higher than we anticipated. On the wastewater side, salaries were up about $10,000, and building and plant maintenance was down by about $5,000 than we anticipated, and then bond interest for 2014A bond was down by about $22,000. So those are the major changes that we made to the Exhibit A.
Counsel, do we have any questions on these amendments first? If not, do we have a motion for approval of the amendments?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion by Alderman McLanathan, second by Alderman Burberry, for the amendments only. Counsel, do we have to do roll call or voice vote on this?
I would do roll call, please, both of the amendments.
Do we have any other discussion first on the amendment only?
Chair.
McLanathan.
Thank you. The only one to ask is, what was the, I know in salaries, obviously, it can fluctuate, you know, number of personnel you have in a given year, things of that nature. So I understood what you said, kind of, I think the police one went down a little bit. What was the cause for overbudget on the fire side?
We've had a lot of people come and go and retire, and so part of that increase was due to retirements as well, that they got paid out for different vacations and?
Understood.
And stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, will you take roll call on the amendment only?
One moment, please. Brashaw?
Aye.
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
The amendment passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, counsel, before you then again is the second reading of the supplemental ordinance, and I hope you, if you have any questions, you ask them now before final passage. Nothing else? Madam Clerk, are you ready again?
Yes.
Please take role.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
The amendment passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, counsel, before you then again is the second reading of the supplemental ordinance, and I hope you, if you have any questions, you ask them now before final passage. Nothing else? Madam Clerk, are you ready again?
Yes.
Please take role.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
The amendment passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, counsel, before you then again is the second reading of the supplemental ordinance, and I hope you, if you have any questions, you ask them now before final passage. Nothing else? Madam Clerk, are you ready again?
Yes.
Please take role.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
The amendment passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, counsel, before you then again is the second reading of the supplemental ordinance, and I hope you, if you have any questions, you ask them now before final passage. Nothing else? Madam Clerk, are you ready again?
Yes.
Please take role.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
The amendment passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, counsel, before you then again is the second reading of the supplemental ordinance, and I hope you, if you have any questions, you ask them now before final passage. Nothing else? Madam Clerk, are you ready again?
Yes.
Please take role.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
The amendment passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, counsel, before you then again is the second reading of the supplemental ordinance, and I hope you, if you have any questions, you ask them now before final passage. Nothing else? Madam Clerk, are you ready again?
Yes.
Please take role.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Meisig?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. We will now move on to first readings. Item number eight is a first reading of ordinance number 2019-79. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Ordinance amending section 480.11, prohibited parking streets of the codified ordinances of the city of Freeport, Illinois on Park Boulevard near Parkview Home.
And this will be presented by Director Carr?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. The, we had a resident in the area over on Park Boulevard that contacted the city regarding parking problem that exists on Park Boulevard just north of Empire.
You know, that wasn't necessarily a consideration of the zoning process, you know, this is what we consider with the zoning, the standards and the La Salle Sinclair. You know, video gaming isn't specifically mentioned in the special use portion, that's just as it says, you know, to allow taverns, packaged liquor stores, and any establishment selling alcoholic beverages for consumption. So, you know, video gaming wasn't necessarily really brought up throughout the public hearing process or, you know, at either of those meetings, just because it really is about the serving of the liquor.
One more follow-up.
Yes.
It seems we had the change recommended to us with the store just to the north of us. I don't know when the gas station one went in, when in effect, but what, under what circumstances do we see something that doesn't meet the La Salle Sinclair factors when making considerations on this? At what point does it not cease to be a rubber stamp?
Well, you know, I suppose I would, I would know it when I see it, that's kind of a hypothetical question.
Supreme Court.
Justice Potter.
There you go. I like it. All right, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question, Director Zupkov. I know it's a special use permit, but is this the full cost of the liquor license for them to establish this business?
No, they would have to go through the licensing process in addition to this. This is just to ensure that they can have the property zoning when they go in front of the liquor commission.
So it's no guarantee at this time?
That's right.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? If not, we have a first by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Ross to move this forward. So this will be moved forward to the, for the second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be January sixth, two thousand twenty. Before us now, we have the reports of department heads. We're going to start with you, Director Zupkov, with finance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tim, I'd like to report that last week we received a reimbursement from the Department of Natural Resources for our boat launch at Teddy's Crossing. Back in September of two thousand and sixteen, we bought and installed the boat launch in anticipation we were going to get a grant that was previously approved, but because of the impasse with the budget with the governor and the legislature, no money was ever appropriated for us to get reimbursed. And then when it did pass a budget, they didn't include any money for us to get reimbursed, and the N R told us, well, you may get it, you may not. So, we kind of wrote it off and didn't anticipate getting it, so we didn't put it down as receivable, but it was nice receiving it last week. And the amount was fifty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Wow, that's wonderful. Moving on, Community Development Director, Director Zupkov.
Nothing additional tonight, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Director Carr, Public Works and City Engineer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So our guys have kind of switched gears a little bit. We've sent out as many pothole patching crews as we possibly can, try to take care of that growing problem. We do still have a couple crews that are, that are doing some leaf pickup, but it's very, it's very slow at this point in time. Most of it's done with a loader, and it's just taken quite a bit of time. So, we're still picking up leaves, but do know that the first time it does snow, we are going to give up on leaf pickup and shift our priorities mainly to clearing snow and filling potholes. So, for the listening public, if you are still planning to put your leaves out, we may or may not get to you before it snows next. So, it might be better to just bag them and take them out to the transfer station. And then, for the water and sewer, since Tom's not here, did want me to let you all know that the solar farm is running at seventy-five percent. There was a, there was an issue with one of the breakers, so we're not sure if the breaker came in today or not, so. So that is all we have with Public Works.
I have a question. On the solar farm, if that breaker is fixed, it'll go up to the hundred percent?
Go a hundred percent. It's actually producing, excuse me, it's producing more electricity than originally anticipated. It was supposed to be producing a sixty percent savings force. We're actually looking in the area of seventy percent, so.
That's great, thank you. Thank you for your report. Moving on, Fire Department, excuse me? Oh, Fire Department, Fire Chief Leggett?
Thank you, Chair. The Fire Department is going to have some word tomorrow from the Freeport Community Foundation. Michelle DeHaven called me this afternoon, and they're going to be supporting our fundraising efforts for the Lucas CPR device that we're going to be placing on all the ambulances. We're starting a fundraising campaign, and they are going to give us two thousand dollars for some seed money. Also, the firefighters local are helping us out with that also, and then also Foreign Fire gave us a little bit of money. So we already have three thousand dollars for that, and I applied to the First Lutheran Church Foundation for some funding also, so that's well on the way, and hopefully we'll be able to place those in service by May. Also, we are working on our FEMA grant, spending the money that we received for the radios. We have a vendor meeting this Thursday, which the vendors will have the opportunity to see all of our fire stations, the dispatch center, and so they can calculate what their installation costs might be as we move forward with the new radio program. And then, again, I want one last beat of the drum on bell ringing. We'd love to have your help in bringing in some more support for the Salvation Army and getting ball rayers out there. Very rare that someone goes by that kettle and puts something in it unless there's somebody there ringing, so your help is greatly appreciated. Thank you again for the honor, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. And moving on to Police Chief Summer.
Thank you. I just want to report that on Saturday, we had a shop at the cop program where we took twenty-two young men and women shopping. We spent about a hundred and fifty dollars on each, each child, and it was really rewarding for the police department, and I know it's going to make things special at some other people's houses, too. Also, on Saturday, we conducted our police test, and we've started our, our list of new officer candidates, so we're going to continue on through that and see how many we get to the final list.
Thank you. IT Director Sutman?
Nothing tonight.
Library Director Ashley Huffeins?
Thank you, and good evening. So if you have your calendars out or a pen, I have a couple of things coming up to talk to you about. So, this Thursday, there are three different activities going on. We have the Make It Take It ornament, where kids, we have the craft ready, and they just come in and they can take it home and do it. And that's from five, four-thirty to five-thirty. And Santa will be at the library from five to seven. And then we're also doing a Santa Storytime from six to six-thirty. So, there's a lot going on on Thursday, the nineteenth. And in January, we have some special art programs that we're doing in coordination with the Momentum Art Guild. They're coming in and teaching some painting classes. So, there's a couple of different sessions. You can either do a full day on January eleventh from ten a.m. to three p.m., or you can do two separate days, part one, part two. You don't have to go to both of them, you can go to one or the other or both, Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, and Wednesday, January thirtieth, from six to eight p.m. But for the art classes, all of those are by registration, so they will fill up quickly. So for you in the listening audience, if you go online and click on events, find the date, and then click on it, and you can register. We, they are already, people are registering, so if you're interested, you should do it now. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Director Huffeins. Next, we have Assistant to City Manager Heinz?
Thank you. We're having a meeting on Thursday night at the Monroe Center, just to provide an update on the pre-disaster mitigation grant again. And we're basically just letting everyone know that we submitted the complete grant application on December eleventh. We did send out a flyer to all the residents inviting them to this meeting, and on that flyer, it was prior to us submitting the application, we said it was going to be going in on December sixth, that was the deadline, and we got a few-day extension, so it ended up going in on the eleventh, but everything is complete, and the state said it looks really good.
Thank you. You mentioned it was this Thursday, what was the time again?
At six p.m.
Six p.m., thank you.
And that is all.
City Managers' Report?
Hey, Madam Chair, I'd like to defer my report to the Council's approval until after the adoption of the resolution of twenty nineteen dash sixty.
Very well, and since the mayor isn't here, we will skip that and move on to Alderman Mysick. Counsel announcement.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I did want to mention, there is no Neighborhood Watch in December. The Fourth of Wednesday falls on Christmas Day, so we will not be meeting. Our next Neighborhood Watch will be Wednesday, January twenty-second, as scheduled. No, nothing further.
Thank you. Alderman Burberry?
Nothing specific, other than to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and looking forward to an exciting two thousand and twenty in the city of Freeport.
Thank you. Alderman Bornhamon?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Alderman McLanathan?
Nothing further, thank you.
Alderman Ross?
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Parker?
Diddle them, nothing tonight.
Alderman Busker?
Just a notice that the Neighborhood Watch meeting for the Fifth Ward has been canceled for the month of December, so, other than that, nothing else.
Thank you. And as for myself, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. The council won't meet again until after the first of the year. Next, we have public comments on agenda or non-agenda items. Is anyone signed up, or would anyone like to speak? We have Mr. Tom Tyke. Tom, what can we hear from you tonight?
Oh, I wanted to tell you I won sixth place and fourth place at Snowshoes tournament.
Snowshoes?
Yes.
Oh, that's so cool, you went up to Chestnut Mountain?
Yep.
Oh, we're so proud of you.
I want to think Matt Summers did a good job, but I saw your picture in the paper. You got a good picture of you.
Thank you, Tom. Item number fifteen is executive session, which is closed session. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Pursuant to five I L C S one twenty slash two C one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Pursuant to five I L C S one twenty slash two C two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to move into, enter into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Alderman Busker, and we have a second by Alderman Mysick. Sorry about that. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll call?
Brashaw?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Bornhamon?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. [inaudible][1181.12]
I just want to report that on Saturday, we had a shop at the cop program where we took twenty-two young men and women shopping. We spent about a hundred and fifty dollars on each, each child, and it was really rewarding for the police department, and I know it's going to make things special at some other people's houses, too. Also, on Saturday, we conducted our police test, and we've started our, our list of new officer candidates, so we're going to continue on through that and see how many we get to the final list.
Thank you. IT Director Sutman. Nothing tonight. Library Director Ashley Huffines.
Thank you, and good evening. So if you have your calendars out or a pen, I have a couple of things coming up to talk to you about. So, this Thursday, there are three different activities going on. We have the Make It Take It ornament, where kids, we have the craft ready, and they just come in and they can take it home and do it. And that's from five, four-thirty to five-thirty. And Santa will be at the library from five to seven. And then we're also doing a Santa Storytime from six to six-thirty. So, there's a lot going on on Thursday, the nineteenth. And in January, we have some special art programs that we're doing in coordination with the Momentum Art Guild. They're coming in and teaching some painting classes. So, there's a couple of different sessions. You can either do a full day on January 11th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., or you can do two separate days, Part One, Part Two. You don't have to go to both of them, you can go to one or the other both, Tuesday, January 28th, and Wednesday, January 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. But for the art classes, all of those are by registration, so they will fill up quickly. So for you in the listening audience, if you go online and click on events, find the date, and then click on it, and you can register. We, they are already, people are registering, so if you're interested, you should do it now. So. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director Huffines. Next, we have Assistant to City Manager Hines.
Thank you. We're having a meeting on Thursday night at the Monroe Center, just to provide an update on the pre-disaster mitigation grant again. And we're basically just letting everyone know that we submitted the complete grant application on December 11th. We did send out a flyer to all the residents inviting them to this meeting, and on that flyer, it was prior to us submitting the application, we said it was going to be going in on December 6th, that was the deadline, and we got a few-day extension, so it ended up going in on the 11th. But everything is complete, and the state said it looks really good.
Thank you. You mentioned it was this Thursday, what was the time again?
At 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m., thank you.
And that is all.
City Managers Report.
Hey, Madam Chair, I'd like to defer my report to the Council's approval until after the adoption of the resolution of 2019-60.
Very well, and since the mayor isn't here, we will skip that and move on to Alderman Mysick. Counsel announcement.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I did want to mention, there is no neighborhood watch in December. The Fourth of Wednesday falls on Christmas Day, so we will not be meeting. Our next neighborhood watch will be Wednesday, January 22nd, as scheduled. No, nothing further.
Thank you. Alderman Burberry.
Nothing specific, other than to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and looking forward to an exciting 2020 in the City of Freeport.
Thank you. Alderman Bornhamon.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Alderman McLanathan.
Nothing further, thank you.
Alderman Ross.
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Parker.
Diddle them, nothing tonight.
Alderman Busker.
Just a notice that the neighborhood watch meeting for the fifth ward has been canceled for the month of December, so, other than that, nothing else.
Thank you. And as for myself, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. The council won't meet again until after the first of the year. Next, we have public comments on agenda or non-agenda items. Is anyone signed up, or would anyone like to speak? We have Mr. Tom Tyke. Tom, what can we hear from you tonight?
Oh, I wanted to tell you I won sixth place, and fourth place is Snowshoes.
Snowshoes?
Yes.
Oh, that's so cool, you went up to Chestnut Mountain?
Yep.
Oh, we're so proud of you.
I want to thank Matt Summers, did a good job, but I saw your picture in the paper. You got good picture of you.
Thank you, Tom. Item number fifteen is executive session, which is closed session. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Pursuant to 5ILCS 120/2C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Pursuant to 5ILCS 120/2C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to move into, enter into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Alderman Busker, and we have a second by Alderman Mysick. Sorry about that. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll call?
Breschaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
You want to see it? Yeah. Yeah.[1504.13]